Hey, and welcome to the November 13th City Council Meeting. I guess you heard that Councilman Block was gonna be singing tonight. And so, it was really, that was a lie just to get you all here. Anyway, thank you all for coming. We love to have people in the audience. Thank the media in the back of the room for being there. Looking for any VIPs? Oh, you're all VIPs, so. If you would at this time, please silence any electronic devices you may have, so we can have an uninterrupted meeting. And if you would like to speak to the council on any topic tonight, we had these nifty little sign-up cards just outside the door, and you can go fill one of these out, hand it to the city clerk, and then she'll hand it down to me, and I'll try to mispronounce your name and bring you up here. This time I'm gonna call on Reverend Victor Bettenhausen, who's going to lead an invocation, and then he's going to do the pledge allegiance for us also. So you please stand.
Almighty God, we are blessed with the privilege of living in this land, Lord God. We can't thank you enough for the freedoms that we have to gather together, to conduct business, and also to worship, but Lord must honor, Lord, to conduct these affairs in a way that pleases you. God, I pray your blessings on everyone here tonight. We thank you for our city leaders, our officials, our mayor, councilmen and women, and others, Lord, law enforcement and emergency responders. God, we pray your blessings on them, and God, we pray that you would lead us, that you would lead these men and women, lead all of us in discussions tonight, that everything would be handled and discussed in a way that honors you in an orderly way and conduct. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. At this time, I ask the city council, please sign in, so we can officially open the meeting. I'm not getting any of them on my desk yet. Our devices are on strike, Madam Clerk. All right. It noted that all our council people are here this evening. We have a quorum, and the mayor is absent, not feeling very well this evening. And we have with us our city clerk, our city attorney, and all our distinguished department heads, so now we can officially open the meeting. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the agenda. Does anybody have any suggested changes to the agenda? If not, I'd like action, please.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda for November 13th, 2017.
Mr. President, so second. A motion second to approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? If not, please vote. We're having a location problem. All right. The agenda is locked in for tonight. That means we know what we're doing. We think we do. All right. Next item is special presentations, and for that, I'd like to call up representatives from Main Street, please.
Good evening. My name's Paul Lowry. I'm the president for the Main Street Crestview Association, and our organization is the one that brings the events for the city downtown, such as Fall Festival, Christmas Parade. However, all the hard work that we do for the planning stages and the choreography of getting things in place on the day of, we could not pull this off without all the help from Public Works. Wayne Steele's crew is just, does a phenomenal job. They come out, and of course, they're in prep long before the events take place, getting the banners up at the ends of Main Street, doing the beautification and the decorations, and making it look wonderful for the folks that come down to participate on the day of. Kenny Martin's crew that's out there doing all the grunt work, my goodness, they just do a tremendous job bringing us tables and chairs and stage and all the decorations that go for the day, getting all the vendors that need water and electricity. My goodness, Mike, the electrician, he is just nonstop from one end of the street to the other for all the folks that need magic for getting electricity. He does a phenomenal job, and we just would be remiss if we did not come and make a presentation and thanks. And Wayne, if you could come up, please? We just could not pull this off without this crew, and so we owe an extreme debt of gratitude for everything that they do for us, and we're greatly appreciative.
So we have a certificate for Public Works Department. Thank you, Paul, for making that presentation, because you're absolutely right. Wayne has crew do a superb job. Moving to item six, approval of minutes. We've all had these ahead of time. Can I get some action on that, please?
Mr. President, I have a correction.
Yes, yes, Mr. Faircliff.
On the page fifteen of 147, September 25 workshop, just a little above halfway, it quotes me, or doesn't quote me, but states something that I said. Said stated that violations need to be stated in the ordinance. You can't expect a person to go find something that is not clearly stated. What I said was to get a fine on something that's not stated.
You get that, Madam Clerk?
No, I don't have the page numbers. What's the?
It's page fifteen of 147.
I don't have a page fifteen.
Ms. Roy, it is page three, and the workshop minute is 9:25.
In the book, it's fifteen.
Okay.
Got it?
Got it.
Any other corrections? Action, please.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Paul.
I move to approve minutes from September 12th, 2017, public hearing, September 12th, 2017, city council meeting, September 25th, 2017, public hearing, and the September 25th, 2017 workshop.
Mr. President, so second. Okay, I have motion second to approve minutes from September 12th, 2017, public hearing, September 12th, 2017, city council meeting, September 25th, 2017, public hearing, and September 25th, 2017 workshop. Any discussion? Please vote. Minutes are approved, as correct. Now, we're gonna open up a public hearing for two different ordinances, and Madam Clerk, if you would read ordinance 1626, I appreciate it.
Mr. President, ordinance number 1626 reads by title. An ordinance of the city of Crestview, Florida, providing for authority, providing for purpose, providing findings of fact, providing for the amendment of Part II Code of Ordinances of Crestview, Florida, Chapter 102, Land Use Regulations, Article 22, Mobile and Manufactured Housing, providing for the repeal of Section 102-537, house, cars, and camp trailers used for living and sleeping purposes prohibited, except in licensed trailer park, and Section 102-538, storage of camp trailers. Other types of house trailers, providing for the addition of Section 102-537, outside storage of recreational vehicles, and Section 102-538, temporary use of recreational facility vehicles, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinance or part of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 1626.
Okay, Ms. Teresa, do you wanna put that in English?
The purpose of this ordinance is to provide orderly, safe, and effective parking of recreational vehicles within residential districts of the city of Crestview, and this will amend the city of Crestview's land development regulations into, hopefully, a more current and more user-friendly, flexible means, and that it will also, in doing so, protect public health, safety, and general welfare. I did provide the requested information in your book. It was, some of the earlier information was actually requested, so we provided the examples of the storage solutions for the recreational vehicles that were displayed as being acceptable in the Country View subdivision area. I hope the pictures were not too small for you to be able to see how the different homes facilitated storage adjacent to their structures, and also to the sides, rears, and other areas of their lot. We turned in the staff analysis that we had prepared back in April, and we revised it in pertaining here, where we cut out all the extraneous information of the last two sections. There was one question on the chart where we listed the twenty different municipalities and governments that we had reviewed. There was a question concerning Okaloosa County in the screening requirement. Our chart says yes, and we hold to that. We pulled Section 2165, where that lists nuisance vehicles, and it reads there that any motor vehicle, boat, or trailer not kept into accordance with a section comes nuisance vehicle. However, in the lower part of that chapter, it details where the vehicles will actually be stored behind an opaque fence with a minimum of six-foot height, where the fence is between the public right-of-ways and the properties, and that's the reason for the yes in the screening requirement for Okaloosa County. The chart itself is on page thirty-five, and that was a requested feature. I didn't have any other specific questions to review or to research and bring back to you concerning the campers, RVs. What I would like to show you is in the relationship of our research. This is right near seventy-eight hundred parcels of property where that is inundated with single-family homes. This is the area that will be affected by this ordinance. A lot of these are inundated with homeowners association, different subdivision rules and regulations, different sizes of your lots. However, if you look at it in the smallest form, your recreational vehicle ordinance will affect single-family dwelling district properties. There's, like I say, there's almost seventy-eight hundred here. That does not account for the subdivision of Redstone Commons, which in itself will have over three hundred lots. It does not affect the other views of Fox Valley. It does not affect the undevelopment park in the Kennedy Lakes. It does not affect the Bethel Bridge area, Freedom Walk, and Adams Estates. Adams Estates will have nearly two hundred and fifty lots in it. So there's gonna be quite a bit of our property, nearly seventy percent of the property within the city, that will be affected by your decision tonight. As we've been over this several times, is, I guess, our best way and quickest way would be just simply to answer questions that may be presented by the board.
Absolutely. Gentlemen, questions, comments? Go ahead, Ms. Faircliff.
On the Part E, outside storage of recreational vehicles?
Yes, sir.
Number four A, it says be screened from public view by a six-foot tall privacy fence or other approved screening apparatus.
Yes, sir.
I looked in the definitions. I didn't find anything for an approved screening apparatus. I was wondering who the approval is up to.
Well, if this is so designated here, the screening could be what they call a fall fencing. It could be planners. We discussed it in the local planning agency as being some type of barrier that would give an aesthetics there of simply being residential, not actually encompassed as being a, quote, trailer park. So the screening apparatus would be kind of broad spectrum. Might be planners, might be a false fence, it might be any number of things. It sort of depends on how you direct that position to go. There's about three definitions that you're going to have to come up with to make it enforceable.
So you're saying this document's still incomplete?
Yes, sir, it's complete in that a screening apparatus is simply that, a screening apparatus. There's numerous ones that are available.
But what I'm trying to find out is who approves it? It says by an approved screening apparatus. What's, who's to say it's gonna work and it's not?
Well, when you, when they apply in for their building permits in the city, it goes through the building and inspection department, and it goes through the planning and zoning department. So essentially, growth management will be doing the same approval on that as they do for most of your building within the city.
Does a code inspector or a code enforcer or code official actually go look at whatever this screening apparatus is and say, okay, that's approved or it's not approved?
It would usually be given to them, such as you do a fence. A fence would require a type of permit. If it's only inundating and it's minor, not a significant value, which a residential fence is very seldom of significant value, it's just approval by their products. When they go in to get a permit to put this on, they will review what they're structuring. If it's sound, adequate materials, then it's approvable by building inspections, just as with any building permit, for fences, for any type of retaining walls, or anything like that.
Well, it says a six-foot tall privacy fence or.
Or.
Okay, so a fence is not included in the other approved screening apparatus.
Well, if they're building a fence, then the fence is already within its qualifications. A screening would be, like I said, a type of, it may be what they call a faux fence. It's only got the appearance of a fence, and yet it's actually a movable gate. The most widely used ones that I have seen in the past are the planner style, where you have your columns and you have your decorative fence, when in reality, it's only a big gate.
Well, I certainly hate to beat this thing around, you know, but if, my purpose with these things to start with was not allow anyone to hook up to it and live in it, let their in-laws just live in it, okay? If we put up a privacy fence, how are inspectors gonna determine whether or not it's hooked up unless he actually goes on to the property?
You're actually in here, you're going to allow the connection to the proper electrical, which is what was requested.
And water and sewer?
No, no, sir, not water nor sewer. You're going to be allow, because that's what was requested by.
That's what I was after. I don't know what my fellow councilmen were after, but that's what I was after, was just to make sure that someone can't park a mobile home or a RV beside his house and move his in-laws into it and hook up the electrical and water and sewer. And then we put up a privacy fence, so nobody riding by can tell if it's hooked up to sewer or water.
A privacy fence only covers a small portion of a twelve-foot RV. It's, if there is people living in it, it will, it will be known, because you can't hardly house somebody in a recreational vehicle that it's not noticed.
Well, I certainly, probably, know you and your staff have put in a tremendous amount of work into this thing, and I appreciate that, but I'm still not satisfied with it.
Well, is, can we receive your recommendations for it?
Well.
What, how do you want to, what type of control do you want there?
If they can't hook up to water or sewer, that's fine with me. If we still need three or four definitions, then it's an incomplete document, and I'm still not good with who the person is that announces whether or not the screening is approved.
Well, that relies in your growth management department, the same, the same people that approve your building now, your building inspections, your planning and zoning. Anything that's constructed runs through those two departments to make sure they adhere with the city code.
Well, that's.
So they would be the one that would be granting this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Davis.
Yes, Ms. Teresa, I have one question, since we have this here, and if we approve, we know what happens. If we don't approve it, I understand if we go back to what's on the books right now, which is more restricted than what, nearly what we've been working on for the last several months. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. If we cannot pass the, what we've got before us, we've no choice but to go back to what's existing.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Block, go ahead.
Mr. Tyler, I'd like for your input here. Were we crossing the line of private property, city property, government delegation here?
I don't know what you're talking about.
You are attorney.
You have a right to regulate what's on the property. It doesn't belong to you, but you do that every day with a house or anything else.
What? Go ahead.
You've got a right to regulate these, more of these things, but just the same as you've got a right to approve the plans of any house that's built there. They all own private property, but you have a right to have certain requirements.
But there are some of the verbiage in here, this proposed ordinance, that I don't accept wholeheartedly. But then there's some areas that we're decorrecting. But this screen fence, that's minute, that's no good whatsoever, like the president has given illustration whatsoever. has given illustrations whatsoever. But then you could not lock down the legislative or someone else, what Mr. Faircliff just reiterated to us.
Okay, well, I read you what they locked down for, for Oaklusa County, and their, theirs is to completely incorporate it behind a six-foot fence between the right-of-ways and all the public property. I don't know that we want to be as restrictive as Oaklusa County. I don't see a reason to mandate having somebody fence their yard if it's not fenced. If, if this is an element, and because it was not questioned in the workshop.
Excuse me, I sure was.
It wasn't, but it wasn't requested to be stricken. That when you're at the workshop and you're building what this ordinance was to say, if that was something that was disagreeable, it would have been the time for the board to say, I wish to discuss this. I wish for that line to be removed from the ordinance. And a consensus of the board would have removed the requirement of having a six-foot fence even mentioned. We did not have that. We have repeatedly requested for feedback. What it, we're trying to put together a document that meets your approval. And if we do not have firm, serious feedback from it in an effective way, then we're left with a quandary trying to pull an ordinance together that will meet your specifications.
Okay, you need to stop lecturing us, okay? I gave you plenty of feedback on this. You cannot say, at the workshop, I gave you feedback. I met with you personally and gave you feedback. You cannot tell me I did not give you serious feedback. You're going to stand there and say, I didn't give you serious feedback on this?
There was never an action by this board to remove the six-foot fence.
Did I, did I not give you serious feedback on this?
You give me serious feedback personally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
But I have to have a consensus of the board.
Okay, that's all you have, Ms. Black?
Just one more here.
I'll reserve my remarks when we get to the motion and the, we get to the motion. Thank you. Okay, at this time, thank you. At this time, we'll receive public comments. I have one card right now. Andrew Rensich, if you would come up, please. Would you get that, City Clerk, please? You have three minutes, and it'll be started once you, once you give us your name and address, then we'll start ticking you down.
All right. Andrew Rensich, 197 Villa Crest. I think we all know what topic I'm getting ready to mention. Yes, the discriminatory RV ordinance that is about to have a second reading. Why it's made it here, I, I don't know. As I mentioned many times before, the ordinance that either passes or fails tonight affects working and retired middle-class families through the city of Crestview, seventy-eight-hundred-plus or seventy percent of the city that was just pointed out to us. This ordinance is a gross government overreach on individual property rights. The way the ordinance is written leaves massive holes for possible litigation, and it's open to interpretation. What is screening? Well, we have heard that it's possibly a potted plant or any other type of trailer that is not considered an RV due to all other types of trailers being exempt from the ordinance. Even if we use common sense and say screening is a six-foot privacy fence, then typical RVs, plated, tagged, paid-for, privately owned, are still in excess of ten feet in height. We've heard that the building code is meant to only allow Crestview citizens to park automobiles equal to the number of bedrooms. Well, that code is meant to be used against developers to ensure a ten-bedroom house isn't built with a single-lane driveway. Once the builder is gone, the property changes hands, and the homeowner then, to the homeowner can park whatever he or she legally owns and pays taxes in their driveway, such as a boat, cargo trailer, et cetera, except for an RV if this passes. I must be confused with what the difference between the two are. Let it be clear, so there's no confusion. If you vote in favor of passing this ordinance as it sits or in general, you are voting to take away individual property rights of every Crestview resident. You will show that you are for big government and everything it stands for, the because-I-say-so mentality. If you vote against this ordinance or no, then you vote to ensure the individual property rights of all Crestview citizens are not stomped on by big government ideology and agendas put forth and fought for by unelected officials of the city of Crestview. LPA quote, "It is better than what you had," Mr. Rensich. Isn't there something more useful we could have used for the last eight-plus months? So far, I've seen well over a hundred-plus people for RV owners' rights, and maybe two or three against them. If you are the people's voice, then where are all the people that you are supposedly speaking for? Vote no. Any questions?
No, thank you for your, for your input. Mr. Brian Carlin? Is it on this topic?
Yes, it is on this topic.
Good, let's won't be sure.
I'll speak on the other topic if you want me to.
Well, this time, keep it to this one.
Well, I'll stop, I'll start on this topic. I've got to give back to Girl Scouts. First, I was hearing something about Oaklusa County and their regulations. Oaklusa County doesn't enforce RV regulation, period. It's up to the cities. Oaklusa County doesn't touch it. The three new neighborhoods that were mentioned, those have all HOAs. So, that's not really, whatever you decide today, it's not going to bother those new, three new neighborhoods, Fox Valley, Redstone, and I can't remember the other one. I live in Fox Valley, I know all about their HOA. I had to move my trailer. The only thing that's allowed in those subdivision or operating vehicles. Now, maybe the fire marshal or any of the fire staff can help me out on this one, but it seems that you guys have created a spark, maybe more than a spark, because there seems to be a lot of people here, even more the first time this topic was brought out. But is it easier to control?
Ms. Carlin, you have to adjust the counsel on this.
Sure, counsel, is it easier to adjust?
We're not going to ask, we're not going to get into a Q and A.
No, no, okay, here's a rhetorical question.
Well, I heard a question coming.
No question needed. It's a rhetorical question. I'm sure even the audience can answer on this one. You've ignited a massive spark in the city. There's no doubt about it. The citizens want something. I don't have an RV. I do want less government in my life. But there's a, a spark that has been created, and I don't know if it's easier to maintain or to, to hold together a controlled burn or if it's easier to, to take care of a wildfire. What you have right now is a controlled burn. It's up to you guys if you want to maintain this controlled burn, or if you want these residents right here to spread the word and have this turn out into an all-massive wildfire. It's up to you guys. I'm an engineer. I have the fire department underneath me in the military. I'll tell you right now, it's a lot easier when you do a controlled burn than it is a lightning strike out in the woods and you have to fight a wildfire. You guys are elected officials. I'm hoping you guys do the right thing. Like I said, I don't have an RV. But this seems to be a pie slice of our community, listening to these guys. That's all I got.
All right, thank you.
I'm off to Girl Scouts. Have fun.
I'll be watching. We're streaming live. You're not the only one. The next, it looks like Sue, is it Jo, Jones? Okay, thank you. A little quick writing, is what.
Well, it was very quick writing. I did know the cards are outside.
Just give us your name and address if you would, please.
My name is Sue Jones. I live in, at forty-eight Abbey Road here in the city of Crestview. I've been a, lived here for twenty-seven years, plan on living here at least twenty-seven more if I live that long. I am an RV owner. Love our RV. The ordinance as it stands today, yes, it should be changed. More restrictive, no. The biggest concern is not letting people live in these, in recreation vehicles, full-time. That's what they are, recreation vehicles. They're not for full-time living. No water, no sewer, that's good. The only reason for the electrical hookup is because the newer RVs, unlike what the ordinance is talking about, they need the electrical to maintain the RV as far as mold accumulation and the health of the RV. This fencing thing is just sort of, I can't get my head around it. I live in one of the earlier neighborhoods in the city, behind the hospital. I don't have room to pull a vehicle between my house and the house next door, let alone a thirty-foot RV. We, when we purchased our RV, we expanded our drive and had an improved surface to park it on. Therefore, it was out of the roadway, out of the public through affair and such. So, it's not for full-time occupancy. We hook it up. This ordinance, as it's being proposed, the new ordinance being proposed, it's just got, it's just too restrictive in so many ways. As the gentleman previously submitted, Oaklusa County does not enforce RV rules. The city of Fort Walton Beach, I don't think even has an ordinance to enforce. We should look at this thing from a logical standpoint. I was a logistic, a logistician in the Air Force for about twenty-seven years, so that's sort of my area. To make it, make sure that we issue a permit. You get a permit for a fence, get a permit to park your RV. And make sure when you do that, it's in compliance. It's parked on a hard surface. It will have no water and sewer hookups. It'll be out of the roadway and appropriately, there. Makes a little revenue for the city, but it makes sure that it complies with what this board wants. No, we don't want a bunch of people living in RVs or travel trailers. I also don't want eighteen-wheelers parked in my neighbor's yard.
You can finish up, ma'am. It's time's up.
Okay.
Thank you. Stevens, draw, strong.
I'm Steven Strom, 139 Villa Crest Drive. I don't have a dog in this race, as I don't have an RV, as I said back in March. This is discriminatory, flat, no question about it. One of you, I'm not going to mention any names, just down the street from your house has a large sailboat in the driveway. I find it ugly, but it's his property. He can put it there. We're not even talking about that. We can put any boat we want in our yard. I could put the Queen Mary on a trailer and park it in my yard if I had the real estate, and it'd be no problem. But I can't put an RV there? Don't have to screen the boat, don't have to screen the work trailers, don't have to screen anything except an RV. Why are you trying to be an HOA and tell us what we can and cannot put in our yards? Safety, I get, I go with that all the way. Living in it, I agree, no. However, two of you admitted in March that you have broken the current code by living in your own RVs while your houses were being retrofitted, being refurbished. I got no problem with that. I see no problem. But by the way, it's currently written in the way the proposed code is written, you can't do that. You're going to go get in an emergency, but then you've got to come and get a Mother May I letter. Don't have to have a Mother May I letter to have a boat, have a work truck. Don't have to do that. Just RVs. Why are we discriminating? Will this stand up to a discrimination suit in a court of law? I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. I would suggest maybe you talk it over with your city attorney and see if it will face a discrimination suit. Because you're narrowing it down to one item. It's not blanket to all trailers. Now, you have family, friends come into town. They have their own RV. What's wrong with them staying a week or a week and a half in your backyard in their RV? I have no problem with it. It's self-contained. Or borrowing power from you, they're not hooked up to the sewer system or anything. They drive off to get their septic pumped out in an approved station, no problem. We have a hurricane, you evacuate, you come back, your house is destroyed, all you got is your RV, you're on your property, so you can protect your property from looters or whatever else. You haven't addressed that without coming to the city. Please, may I? We pay for this property. So, I've got about ten seconds left. Please, think, think hard before you push that button on which way you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Now, I've got some other cards, but I'm not sure. Gary Johnson, are you going to speak on this topic?
Yes.
That's one for later on, okay. And Jody Smallwood?
Definitely.
That's later on, okay, that's, we have another ordinance coming up. So, this would be John Monmaza? Yes.
I'm John Monmaza, a twenty-two-year resident of Crestview. I reside at 191 Non-Drive, and I'm an RV owner. I've owned RVs for about eight years. I'm fortunate enough that my RV actually fits in my driveway, which now, I can't park it there because of the proposed ordinance. So, I, along with many others, are opposed to ordinance sixteen-twenty-six. First off, there are many issues with the parking of RVs. We're unable to park our RVs in proposed areas because of lot size, lots of boundaries, utilities like air conditioning units, sprinkler systems, and public utilities that lead to our homes. In my case, I would have to move the electric lines that lead to my home, water lines, just all of that, plus porpad. And I don't think the city took into consideration the expense of doing all that. Additionally, when you start, if the ordinance passes, that means many of us have to find places to put our RVs, in storage lots, those types of things. There aren't enough storage slots in the city of Crestview to support all of this. Additionally, they don't have utilities to be able to provide maintenance for RVs, water, all of those kinds of things. In my case, I have to charge the batteries in my RV every ten days. That's a five-and-a-half-hour process. That's going from the absorption phase to the float phase to full charge. There's no RV storage area that's going to provide you with utilities to do that. Many of us don't winterize our RVs because we use them year-round. I was just out last week, and I have two more trips scheduled. So, there's no way that I'm going to winterize mine, park it someplace, disconnect all the batteries and all those types of things. The other thing that's not taken into consideration is cleaning our RVs. There's no place in the city of Crestview that you can take your RV to have it cleaned or to clean it yourself. I have to wash and wax mine in my driveway. My RV is thirty-seven feet long, so you can imagine what type of process that is. In closing, the ordinance just places an unfair burden and hardship on RV owners. I believe the city could better spend its time addressing the plight of abandoned and derelict properties and vehicles. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments before I close it and bring it back to the council? All right, thank you. Now, we're going to, I'm going to ask action from the council. In order to discuss, we need a, we need a motion from somebody, please.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. James.
I move to approve ordinance sixteen-twenty-six from second reading and send to the mayor, council president, and city clerk for signatures.
Second. I have a motion second to approve ordinance sixteen-twenty-six on second reading, sent to the mayor, council president, and city clerk for signatures. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. James.
Um, I'll, I'll go back to the, what I asked our growth management director. If this is not approved, we refer back to the original ordinance, which is way more restrictive. restrictive. I don't have it in front of me to read it. But if I'm not mistaken, that basically eliminates any RV from being in your yard. Am I correct on that?
Any RV over 24 feet?
Over a certain feet, over a certain foot, yeah, over a certain...
Over 24 feet.
Anything over 24 feet, it's, they won't be able to do it anyway, based on the ordinance that we have on the books right now. So with that being said, if we disapprove this and we go back to the regular ordinance, we're restricting anybody over, how many feet?
24.
24 feet. So if you got 24 feet, you can't keep it on there anyway. This right here allows us to go past 24 feet. So I'm looking at dilemma, and some of the things come up, well, people that's over 24 feet, they won't be able to keep it anywhere based on old ordinance. Doesn't pass, we go back to the old ordinance. Then we will have to address the old ordinance at some whatever time frame. So that's why I voted to approve, voted to bring this forward.
Other comments, questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sorry.
One other thing. I could support the no fencing thing, but the other aspects of it, I support, but the no fencing, and I understand that, that the RVs are in the minority, the owners are in the minority based on the population and number of RVs that are in here. And I also know that over in the area where we are, well, basically, it's a larger concentration than some of the other areas. I understand their lot sizes are smaller than some other areas might be, because this, like I understand when I drive over there, it's numerous cars that aren't even parked in the driveway. I, in my opinion, the subdivision built too small to accommodate what it's got right now, but I wouldn't hear when they, when they, when they did that. And when I took office, I voted to represent all the people, but I look at the majority of the people, and the ones that I'm talking with, they used to say it's distracting from their house. I don't know how it affects the property value, I really don't, I don't get into that, and I'd have to, you know, you'd have to talk with a realtor about that, and I didn't talk with any. So that's the way I'm looking at it.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Cox, you have something?
Yes, just adding one point. Ordinance 1626, the main contention before was the length at 24 feet, and that was pretty restrictive. That's totally eliminated in ordinance 1626. There's no length restriction in it.
Oh, yeah. All right. My turn. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say, Councilman Hayes, I appreciate your comment about we'd be going back to more restrictive, but if you remember, what we did was, we voted to suspend any infractions until we fixed this. And if we don't pass this, we haven't fixed it. So we would continue that waiver until we fixed it. Rejecting this tonight wouldn't mean that we don't address it, it means we would fine-tune it. You've already said you have an objection to it, the fence may not belong there. If you vote for this, you're taking offense in all. So I think, to me, the thing would be to fine-tune it. Mr. Block, do you have something before?
Yeah, you get through dinner.
You sure?
I'll come at the end.
Okay, all right, I could be a while.
That's all right, I got my lunch.
Okay. Right now, everything was okay in the driveway, it just couldn't be any longer than 24 feet. Now, if we pass this tonight, we fix that. Here's what we broke. Now, it must be in the back or stored parallel to the sign, three feet from the property line, screened by a six-foot fence or screening device, which doesn't cover a 12-foot RV. And if you don't have the support outside of your driveway, now you're gonna have to get a permit, pour a slab, come back, get a permit, put up a screening. And here's the thing I didn't think of last time, and I am a previous, in full disclosure, I'm a previous camper owner. I didn't have it on property because I chose to live in an HOA, and that was my decision. But maneuverability, if we put these slabs next to our house contiguous, I like that word, touching the driveway, what you really want to do, and y'all know this, is you back on to where you're gonna park it. Most of our yards would not handle taking an RV or a camper through your backyard, tearing it up, especially during the rainy season, and most of us, at least in my backyard, I can't even turn it around because I don't have the space you need to completely turn around a camper and an RV. And one other issue, if you're gonna put trees, potted plants, whatever it is we're gonna put in front of this where I want to back up, every time I park, I'm gonna have to go and buy some new trees or potted plants or whatever, because I can't get around in my backyard and bring that puppy back around this way. The only way to really maneuver that is to back it up. Most of you know that. In your own camp, that's the first thing we always do, is back into our spots, right? Oh, I'm sorry, we're not taking a survey here. But anyway, finish this out, though. Within the county, only one city prohibits driveway parking. No one else requires a setback. None requires a screening. I disagree with Ms. Galen on that because she quoted the section that said, "trailers and motorized vehicles." A camper is not a trailer, it's not a motorized vehicle. The Okaloosa ordinance that I looked at, 600-04, says, "Travel trailers, campers, and motorhomes shall not be used as a dwelling unit in residential districts." That's all Okaloosa County says about it. And that's what we want to do. We just want to make sure people aren't living in it. And I think we just, we just overdid it. We got a little carried away with what we wanted to do, and so, if you haven't figured this out, I don't support this. Okay, Mr. Block, you can turn up.
Most of what you said, I'll say ditto. For the last four years, this has been an issue, and I've been an RVer for about 16 years. I might use that word today, ex-Rver. But many places throughout this United States of America, I have been on that RV, with that RV, and as I stated here at the last meeting, when we had that convention, RV convention here in Crestview, Florida, and Mr. Steele provided 87, but still, hookups. The president of that organization, well, they gave me a letter that Crestview was the most RV-friendly area municipality they have been in in the United States of America. Well, now then, we'll prohibit them from coming back. Well, I disagree with that. But like I said earlier, the verbiage, I'm concerned about some of the verbiage now as I learn here tonight, that the 24-foot, it may be gone away, so it's not written. But what's behind that place where it's not written? It's not so stated. I like to say it shall be or shall not be. But we are doing the RV people a disservice when we're putting these restrictions of this ordinance, and we're looking at 1626. Let's fix this thing prior to any action on any ordinance, before we bring it back, before this board is in for action. And we're looking for action tonight. I know the president, he wants to get this behind us, we do too. But let's do it right. And let's be fair to the RV people. When you satisfy them, bring them on the table, on the board, all together, we can reach a compromise. I'm not gonna say they're gonna all agree, but we can reach a compromise I think we can live with.
Ah, come on. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Cox, you look like you want to say something. See you, no?
The overwhelming majority of the citizens of this city are not RV owners. This was thoroughly vetted, and it's a good document. Like I say, the length is, that was the number-one contention, that's gone away. I think it's a good document. Thank you.
I would like to comment on that, and we don't, we live in a constitutional republic where the minority is protected. If we didn't do that, the majority would rule everything, and the minority would never have a say in anything. So that's why our founding fathers decided to set up the way they did. We don't have to vote with the majority, just like we decided the majority of voters wanted medical marijuana in Crestview. We didn't say we have to do that because they wanted that, we made our own decision. Yes, Mr. Hayes?
Yes, Mr. President, and fellow council members, I know we have different thoughts and different ideas, and that's why we're up here, because we have different ideas and different thoughts. We look at what's, what we think is what they elect us for, for making the best judgment decision we can. Sometimes we make good decisions, sometimes we don't. But we have to look at, well, I have to look, I look at the big picture, and I look at all the citizens in Crestview. I look, I believe in protecting minorities. I'm a minority myself, so I can quite well understand that. But if we don't get something, remember, we remember when this first started, it was based on some citizens concerned that it really started, and that's how it came to us. There was 30 or 40 that basically had concerns about it, and then they voiced that, and that's how it basically came up. And that's why we started looking at that. I think about six, seven months ago or longer that we started looking at this. The guidelines we gave to them was to go out and see about getting a compromise. It was vetted through the LP, and was, and did research, and we did everything else on this, and based on the recommendation, what was presented, we had an opportunity to voice our opinions, go back and forth on that, discuss. We had several workshops, I know of, not well attended, but we did have those, and we provided. If I remember correctly, you, the president, moved it over to a much larger venue, because we're anticipating numerous people. I think we had...
Few, isn't it?
I was gonna say five, but it might have been more than that. So that, based on, based on some of those meetings that we had, there was no concern based on input, what they desired, what they didn't desire. So we went along the guidelines that was given to the growth management to do the research and everything on this. And when they came back, we had time to vet that, voice that, even before the first reading. Went to the first reading. Nobody jumped up and down after the first reading, but then when it comes to the second, you have some citizens that, you know, and that's their right, you know, I'm glad that they do voice their opinions. Some of the things they said, I agree with, a few things I disagree with what they said, but that's opinions, and we go on opinions. Now, towards the legal aspect of it, that's been researched, we know that we have the power to do that, so we're not breaking any laws. I'm not afraid of being sued for discrimination, based on the law as it is, because we have that. That's what elected officials have that right to do. What I'm saying is, based on looking at the majority of the citizens of Crestview, I have to vote my conscience based on that, and that's what I'll be doing.
Any other discussion? If not, we need to come to a vote. The ordinance is, I'm sorry, the motion that was, is on the table, is a motion to approve ordinance 1626 on second reading and sent to the mayor, council president, and city clerk for signatures. And the motion fails by a count of three no's to two yeses.
Mr. President, questions?
Yes, Mr. Hayes.
Since this failed, what do we do now? Are we gonna continue to work on this?
I think we go into the people to do that, yes.
And by, I say, you know, continue to work on this, I, really, me, basically, I like to know what's it gonna take to satisfy the minority with the RVs? That's basically what I'm looking at.
What I would recommend then is we have another workshop, and maybe get more people than we did at the last workshop. Because even you, you voted for it, but you said you had some concerns about it. So you're not fully on board with it?
No, I didn't say concerned, I said, my statement was that I could go along with the fences issue.
Well, you can go along with the fence. Oh, I thought you had an issue with the fence.
No, no, no.
Oh, okay, my bad.
I said I could go along with, fence or no fence, you know, the fence is the main issue, I don't think, to me. Fence or no fence?
Okay, so, yeah, I, yes, I think we will have to schedule another workshop and re-vet this whole thing. Yes, Mr. Cox?
I don't think we need to waste our time on another workshop. We've had workshops, we've had public hearings, public input, growth managers have put a lot of work in this, okay? It went down, it failed, so now, the old ordinance is back in effect.
Yes, we know that.
We're not gonna workshop this to death, excuse...
Well, I don't think you're gonna make that decision, Mr. Cox.
That's true.
I think we, the council, make that decision.
Excuse me, but, but you don't need to say that we are either, we need to have consensus.
I said I think we need one.
Okay.
Yes, we're interested.
If we reflect back on the minutes, and I can't give you the date, but I know it was stated during the, during the last time, during the first reading, I mentioned about a workshop, and you said we don't need another workshop. That's what you said.
We had a workshop on this.
I know, but I made, I made reference to, well, we might maybe want to consider another workshop, and you said we don't need another workshop. That's what you stated.
Well, then you could have outvoted me.
No, I'm just telling you what you stated, now you're saying workshop, Mr. President. That's the only thing...
Well, because we just, we just shut down the ordinance.
True.
So you just wanted to leave everything to the...
No, no, no. I, I'm here to listen to the people. We had workshop, I like, Mrs. Cox, workshop, workshop, workshop. Open it to the public, sir. I know what's gonna happen. I hope I'm wrong, but I think I know what's gonna happen with the workshop. We're gonna get less than that 3% that we got in the last election, but maybe we won't. But I'm...
We're in workshop. Mr. Fairholme?
Yes, this one failed, but I don't think we're ready to buy flowers and bury it yet. We did all of this to try to fix the old one, and now we're back to square one. The old one still needs fixing. And we can't, without breaking the law, discuss it unless we have a workshop.
Did you make, you want to make that in form of a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
You may want to take some action, we've voted, of course, on the old one, I could get the phone while you're working on this, because if you're not, then I go by the old one, and it's not gonna be...
Teresa, how was the old, the, what was the word we used? We couldn't use waiver, we used...
It was, it wasn't moratorium.
Yeah, moratorium. We used that, and how did we word it? We didn't give it a certain date because obviously we're seven months later than that. Didn't we word it until we, until we fixed?
Until we brought it to the council.
Right.
Until we brought it to the council to have their decision. I would have to research the exact wording.
Yeah, I think we need, I think we need the exact wording on that to see if we have to extend a moratorium.
We extended the moratorium to the first reading. The moratorium on the...
You're sure of that?
On the first reading, we introduced it.
Would you get that, would you get that in writing, please?
I need a bullet to...
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Exactly, because we had to extend it, if you remember, because the LPA actually wanted some additional time. The LPA, instead of taking it in one, I think they actually did about near three meetings concerning it. And we actually come before y'all and got an extension on the time.
The whole purpose of the moratorium was to not enforce that old ordinance until you got a new one.
Right, and we don't have a new one.
We don't have. Not just bring it to the council, I mean, if it's not approved, you still don't have a new one, so it needs to be extended until one of our revisions approved by the council.
I don't know that we can extend it, I'm thinking that you may want to actually create...
Create a new one?
Create a moratorium, because I think it is already past its time. I think it's, it's already, already, so the safest way would be to enact a new moratorium for a particular amount of time.
You had the verbiage for that? So it could be recommended if someone chose to do this.
I hereby move to create a special moratorium of 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, to be in effect until such time as a workshop can be planned and advertised.
Well, not the workshop, no, because you can't, you can't solve it at the workshop.
No, sir, but you would be able to at least bring it forward to know whether you're gonna need to extend this moratorium there. I would, if you're thinking you're gonna have a workshop in 30 days, I would put a moratorium on it for 90. If you think you're gonna have the last meeting in November, which is the 28th of November, I would extend it at least 90 days, or create it for at least 90 days. Your next workshop availability will be in January, January the 22nd. Uh, your next workshop availability, um, will be in January, January the twenty-second. If you are planning January the twenty-second, I would create a moratorium for at least a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty days.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes, ma'am, please.
I have a, I have a recommended motion, that way you're not worried about time. Motion to create a moratorium on current camp trailer ordinance until such time as a new ordinance is established or the council decides to continue with present ordinance. That way you're not in a timeframe, you're done.
Does that sound good to you, Ms. Ollie?
Sounds good.
You're gonna be caught with that published.
You know, keep in mind that you're going into the holiday season, it's gonna be...
But this'll, this'll project us, give us enough time.
Could there be a clarifying that it will not extend past a certain amount?
I mean, open-ended, that way you could go a year or longer.
We don't know. We didn't expect to go seven months. Ms. Faircliff?
Would it be possible, and council may want to talk to this, um, to leave the old ordinance as is with the exception of just striking the length requirement?
That's why we had to do the moratorium.
Okay.
So they wouldn't force you to...
Yeah, but if we put a moratorium on the whole ordinance, then for the next...
No, we don't put a moratorium on the whole ordinance. I thought they put a moratorium on the, the regulation of camp trailers, whatever it's called.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I am confused. Now, I, I don't know what we're doing. I don't think we know what we're doing either.
Well, it would be...
But, but at least we're trying. Um, I, I, I like what she said on, on that, you know, we, um, it's, it's obvious that the majority said we need to revisit it, and I, I'm for that, revisit it, um, but let's not have it going on for another seven months, Mr. President. That is too long for, we got some other major issues that we, we're dealing with right now. Uh, let, let's, like, get a timeframe set for this so we can, uh, listen to the, our public and we can sit down and discuss it and move forward.
I think, um, I hear what you're saying, but I think at the workshop, uh, we should walk out of that and have the fine tuning that we want done on the ordinance.
I need to, I hope so.
If we have the workshop, what do we have the end of this month? Do we have anything scheduled for our workshop?
Twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Um, well, actually, we did have some things done up. It depends on how you want to finish up with your, um, property maintenance code, how you want to handle your out-of-city sewer and water requests, and how you're gonna function with your, uh, future land use and zoning, um, uh, areas. There's a number of those that you need to act on, whether or not you're gonna continue citywide or you're gonna continue piecemeal. Um, there's, you've got several things that's coming up that you're gonna need, um, workshop. You've got your charter coming up.
There's not a workshop.
Of course, that should be, that should be over very quickly. Um, you have a workshop the twenty-seventh of November, the next one is the twenty-second of January, and the twenty-sixth of February.
Mr. President, there's also a request from another department head for a workshop item to be on the November election. He asked me two months ago for it to be on the November, Chief Tatum.
On the twenty-seventh? Uh, make the breakers out, too, but, uh, we have, gentlemen, I think we have two choices if we're, if we're, if we're gonna have another workshop. Either have a special workshop or wait until January. The only two choices we have, because we already have our plate for November and December. I think it's Christmas, we're gonna have a workshop on Christmas. At least, I don't think so.
I suggest placing it after January.
Well, why not the workshop in January?
You ain't gonna have time.
Workshop just gonna be gather information.
I'm telling you, I know how old folks work.
We're not doing it, we're not, we're not doing it, we're taking, we're just gonna sit down and discuss.
Let's work it out. We can work it out.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. President.
I, I have no objections, uh, in, in January myself, uh...
Would you make a motion then?
Sure. Uh, I don't have a date, but, uh, I would like to make a motion that we have a, a continuation workshop on, on the RV, uh...
On the twenty-second of January? That's your regular workshop?
On the twenty-second of January, two thousand and eighteen.
We have a second. Motion second to have the workshop on twenty-two January on RV campers. Any discussion? Please go to vote.
We still need to do the moratorium.
Yeah, we'll do that. All right, now I need a vote on the moratorium to be continued until, uh, then, of course, gonna supply you with...
I thought the language was Kirkhead.
Oh, yeah, that's what I, I wanna borrow it from.
Would you let me say that again? You don't, if you don't...
No, I was gonna, I was gonna hand it down to someone who's gonna make the motions so they can read it.
Oh, you can't read my reading.
Can you repeat after city clerk?
Repeat after me. Motion to create a moratorium on the current camp trail section of the land use ordinance until such time as a new ordinance is in place or the council determines that the current ordinance will remain.
Mr. President, that's what I just said.
Mr. Blocker is capable of throwing his voice.
Mr. President.
Do I get a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Holly's reminded me it's an incur, a moratorium on the enforcement of the camp trailer works.
Okay. Please amend it. Can I go to voting, please?
I'm sorry, who's seconded? Thank you.
All right, so the moratorium will continue. Okay, uh, moving on to, we're still on the public hearing, and we'll have ordinance sixteen twenty-nine now, related to cannabis. And, Madam Clerk, if you would, uh, read that ordinance, please?
I will. Hold on, I need to write ordinance. Ordinance number sixteen twenty-nine reads by title, An Ordinance of the City of Cresview, Florida, amending chapter eighteen, article three, cannabis-related activities, providing for authority, providing for the amendment of chapter eighteen, article three, by repealing section eighteen dash seventy-seven temporary moratorium and replacing with sections eighteen dash seventy-seven medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities, and amending section seven, eighteen dash seventy-eight study and recommendations, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Since, um, we have already went over this several times, unless it's requested, we will simply answer questions. Uh, one was to make sure we knew of the pharmacies that exist. Um, we have numerous pharmacies, uh... This is your northern boundary, your southern boundary. Most of your pharmacies are along highway eighty-five. You have one or two on highway ninety. Um, however, you're allowed one in anywhere there's pink.
That area doesn't violate the, the, uh, school rule?
Those are, uh, workable, viable locations for a pharmacy.
Thomas, questions?
Ms. Faircliff? Are you, are you talking about pharmacies or, um, a, a...
Medical marijuana.
Marijuana treatment center.
What the law provides is you have to treat them, sorry.
It is the same.
They're pretty the same, she's saying.
It is the same.
If, if we do, if you're not, um, if you're not in agreement with, uh, your ordinance
here, which will, um, ban them for a period of time until such time as the state will allow for, um, a number, a location rule, the way the rules stand right now, uh, medical marijuana, uh, dispensing facility can be built anywhere a pharmacy can be built. Gentlemen, that is your C-one area, and that's where your medical marijuana dispensing facilities could be built.
Yes, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Uh, it's my understanding that the county also has the option of voting for or against this for the county.
Yes, sir, they do.
Now, do you have any information or a map showing where the county can put one? Is that anywhere that's not pink?
Uh, the only area we can have is, is within these yellow boundaries. The majority of the area that is around our particular areas, these, of course, are the residential, but, uh, the majority of them in Opelousas County are either ODST residential or they're mixed use.
Okay, so...
Mixed use would include all of here, 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 here. Like I said, this part here is actually residential, and this part here is residential.
Okay, so then the county pretty much can put a dispensary across the street from one of these pink areas?
If they're, uh, if they allow them into their mixed use or their business use, yes, sir, they can. They would have to abide by your, uh, buffer areas for schools, um, which, that's one of the only buffer, buffer areas there is for schools, uh, elementary, middle, secondary schools, five-hundred-foot buffer.
This statute, espoused by the legislature, is just another example of them trying to take all the power away from the city.
Amen.
Giving them any authority to have any control of it at all.
Well, right now, they have it so that all we can do is say, yes, we allow it, and no, we don't.
Yeah, you can, you can ban it.
But we, we will have no...
Hopefully, come to their senses and give you some authority to do certain things later on.
So if, if, if we don't allow a dispensary, the county can come in anywhere around across the street from those pink areas and put one in, and we can't do anything about it?
No, but you, but if you don't, if you put a ban on it, they can't put them in the city limits. That's the only...
Well, no, I'm not saying put it in city limits. I'm talking about an unincorporated area.
If it just goes, the county's gonna allow, don't mean you have to allow.
That's not what I'm going for. I'm just saying, this, this, this is gonna happen down the road. Uh, if we don't take care of it now, it's gonna happen sooner or later down the road. They're gonna have them in Pensacola and these other cities, and, and patients can go there and buy it if they have a, a physician's certificate for it, if they meet, um, one of the diseases outlined in, uh, uh, Florida chapter three eighty-one point nine eight six, which is probably, I don't know, fifteen diseases or so that qualifies. And as lo, as long as they've got a physician's certificate and one of these diseases, they can go to Pensacola or, or wherever else and buy it. I think you can buy it right now in Pensacola. So it's, it's gonna happen. The only, the only thing I have on it, and the only thing I've ever had on it, is I want something, either in state law or county ordinance or, or city ordinance, that says this is not your, your wholesale, um, ability to legally buy buds of marijuana and walk down the street smoking it. I'm, I think, if they're talking about medical marijuana, and I have always maintained, they need to call it the derivatives of marijuana that are medicinal. Now, the statute talks about ways to administer it. Um, the way it reads, I'm not sure if they're saying smoking is a preferred or a, a approved way or not, but I've got no problem with putting a couple of drops under the, of, of the oil under the tongue of a ten-year-old girl with epilepsy, or a, a veteran with PTSD, or Parkinson's patients, um, cancer patients, anybody with, with pain and, and stuff. I'm all for anything that will help them and improve their way of life, but I am against this wholesale blanket distribution of it for smoking. Now, I'm gonna have to settle that in my own mind, but, um, if I can't get help from a, from a state statute or, or county ordinance or something, I'm, I'm, I'm still on the fence.
Well, the county is under the same ordinance the city is, and they, they can't do anything.
Right.
They don't, they're not allowing the city or the counties to have any control at all.
But they still get to approve or not approve whether or not they will allow a dispensary in the county.
Yeah.
And even if we don't allow it, then the county can put one, or allow one to be right across the street from one of these pink areas, if it's a business district or commercial or whatever.
That goes back into the question, whether or not, just because the county's allowing it, you can hold out.
Any more comments, questions for Teresa? If not, I'd like action.
Mr. President, comment, please?
Yes, Mr. President.
Uh, as I stated, I believe in the last, uh, meeting that we had, uh, my opinion is there's still too many unknowns to this, and the state has not given clear enough directions, uh, for us to move forward on, on having these in our city. Uh, I understand, I agree with Mr. Faircliff on some of the reasons where it might be acceptable, but there's, it's just unclear, uh, what's, what Tallahassee's doing, and they really don't know themselves what they're doing. There's some things that are, that could really be concerned and, uh, get out of the force, and then we don't want another Colorado on our hands, at least I don't.
Well, let's have the in-depth discussion once we get, once we get the motion. If I get a motion from someone in a second, because we have to have the public hearing first. If I get a motion from someone.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. President.
I move to approve ordinance sixteen twenty-nine, second reading, send to the mayor, council president, and city clerk.
For a second. I have a motion second to approve ordinance sixteen twenty-nine, a second reading, and send to the mayor, council president, and city clerk for signatures. Thank you, Teresa. So if anybody from the public, uh, again, now, Gary Johnson, I believe you wanted to go at the end, uh, Jody Smallwood, is that for this topic?
No.
No? Okay. Anybody wanna speak on this particular topic? Public hearing, you have three minutes, if you wanna speak. I, I wish you'd fill out a card, Steve, but, come on up, we know who you are, but...
I'm sorry?
Come on up.
Again, I'm Stephen Strom, one thirty-nine Villa Crest Drive. Been here for twenty-six and a half years. I have a family member in another part of the state who benefits from medicinal marijuana. Contrary to popular belief, medical marijuana does not have the high THC value that is where you get your hallucinogenic. It's basically an oil that you digest orally. You don't smoke it. Medical marijuana has nothing to do with Colorado, where it's legal to sell regular hallucinogenic marijuana. It's totally different. Technically, it's, even that medical marijuana, by federal statute, is a no-no, but people are coming around. Sooner or later, I foresee the federal government legalizing medical, uh, medical... Sooner or later, I foresee the federal government legalizing medical marijuana. Do I agree with it? Doesn't matter. You know, I'm just one person. But like I said, I have a family member who does benefit from the use of it. Again, I would suggest that maybe you might want to research and actually go out and read up on what it is. It's not the smokable stuff that's going to get you high as you're alluding to walking down the street, smoking it. It's an oil that is ingested orally with very, very, very low THC value, but it's got the other stuff in it that relaxes the person. Someone, I forget who, said, you know, they could be suffering from PTSD, they could have other medical issues and that just calms them. So if you haven't researched it on your own, please go out and research it. Just don't let your stereotypical fears drive you. You know, do honest research. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members in the audience? If not, a call on members for any comments, questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
On our first reading, I believe we put this in effect indefinitely. We'll oppose it till the state mandates something else.
That's, that's these current ordinances.
And this is second, this puts a grip to that, so. Did you, I thought, Ms. Hayes, did you make a motion to that, to adopt this ordinance?
Yes.
And I second it. So I think we need to accept it.
Discussion right now.
Exactly.
Ms. Faircloth.
The, the point I was trying to make about, I understand they're not going to allow people to just walk down the street smoking it, okay? But a lot of people, I'm not going to say most because I haven't polled anybody, but I, I would imagine a lot of people that are users are hoping this passes because they seem to think that it, medical marijuana, all they got to do is grow it in a pot in the backyard and keep it in a bag in their pocket. If they get stopped, they'll say, hey, this is medical marijuana. So although the statute says it has to be grown by approved nursery, you know, that's not going to stop people from doing their own. If they would stop calling it medical marijuana, I mean, if, if we have a derivative of a, of a beneficial medicine that comes from the bark of a palm tree, we're not going to call it medical palm tree. Okay? It's going to be the name of the compound or the derivative of it. And so if they would just leave marijuana out of it and call it synthetic, well, not synthetic, but THC oil or something like that, I believe more people would favor it. And of course, it's not up to any government to determine whether or not that's the right or wrong name. I'm just saying that it, it lends to that assumption that if we approve it, then they'll be able to go anywhere and buy it from whoever and walk down the street and smoke it because it's now legal. And that's not the case.
Other comments, questions?
Only other, other comments, just for, you know, for our constituents.
Did you use your microphone?
Oh, just, just for, you know, just for, for clarification and transparency. Three, four of us, I did attend a symposium on this from the League of Cities. We've had one young lady from school, let's give her a presentation. Plus, we got a book about this thick, mine's laying on, laying in my truck right now on this, so it's not that, I don't think, we're not educated on this right here. Might not understand some of it, but I think we've had sufficient knowledge that's been presented to this, or we've had ample time to research it ourselves and for the questions that we didn't know, that's why I'm ready to make a decision on the vote because I have researched and studied this right here.
Thank you. I'd like to make a few closing remarks because, yes, we, we have done a lot of research on this. Had a workshop, we went to the symposium, our staff did plenty of research on it. And actually, there, there is THC in this, in the, in the new law. The, the old Charlotte's Web, it was minuscule. This is a little bit different, but I'd like to make a few points because I support the ban. First and foremost, this is not a permanent ban. This is a ban with a built-in monitoring system to address again at a later date if needed. And monitoring is needed because although many think all the guidelines are in place in the state, right now, there was a current bill in the House that would change this to say that smoking would be permitted because right now it's not. So it's already being introduced to allow smoking. There are three lawsuits already against the state of Florida based on the grow farms. There's a suit because the farms, they said they were discriminatory in how they awarded the licenses to the farms, so there's a lawsuit there. There's a lawsuit from John Morgan who, who funded the original campaign to allow smoking marijuana. He has a lawsuit against the state saying that that was the intention all along. And there was a lawsuit against the state because they can't process all the applications they have. They have about 49,000 applications right now. They've only processed 22,000, they can't keep up with it. And so they went out and did an RFQ to hire a company to outsource it, to do all the cards for them. And then they selected somebody and they got sued because the other people at law said you were biased and who you selected. So that whole process is held up. It's taken three months to get a medical marijuana users' card. You only, it's only good for nine months and it starts the day you apply, not the day you get it. So one-third of the application, your card is one-third used when you already get it. So there, there were so many problems going on with this. They were supposed to issue five licenses initially and then five more for grow farms on 3 October. They haven't done that, they've done five, and they haven't figured out how to do the other five. And they had congressional hearings, I mean legislative hearings in Tallahassee over that. I still can't get an answer on whether it's going to be taxed or not. The original bill said it wasn't going to be and yet the statute says it has to be a prescribed drug to be exempt and you can't prescribe marijuana, it has to be recommended because it's a federal one drug. I called the councilman I know in Pensacola to find out good, bad, and ugly in Pensacola and he really couldn't tell me much about it, so he asked, he said he was going to have the city, city manager call me and that never happened. So I went to True Leaf, which is a company that has a license in Pensacola to sell medical marijuana. I found out that as a veteran, I can get a 15% discount, but other than that, there was no real person to talk to. It was advice how to get a card and the hours they're operating and the fact that they can deliver. And when we had the original hearing on this, this is what kind of convinced me. Not only, so we have a temporary ban or long-term ban, whatever we have in Crestview, because of what Ms. Faircloth said, you, there are unincorporated parts of Oklahoma County around us, they, they've already authorized it, they could put them in there. Fort Wall Beach passed that ordinance to have it there. And you can have it delivered. Now, it can be sent through the mail, again, because it's a federal one, I mean, Schedule I drug. But they can, they can deliver it to your home, which might incur, I'm guessing, more cost, but they couldn't get anybody there to answer the phone, so I don't know. The only other issue I had with it, and I really wanted to ask them because I know in Colorado, banks won't process credit cards used in medical marijuana facilities because it's called drug money. It's against the law, so they have to take nothing but cash, which means now you have a facility that only has a bunch of drugs and a bunch of cash in it, and so they have in the sand, rinks there every day, empty out the cash. There, there are things to it that people didn't really think of when they, when they passed all these statutes. The other thing too is the, the police have to go through more training. Policemen can't stop someone DUI, which if you're high marijuana, the DUI, and determine, they can determine you have marijuana in your system by doing a blood test, but they can't determine if it was 30 days ago, whether you just smoked it two minutes ago, whatever. So it, it's a challenge and it may not be a big challenge, I don't know, but I do know that the cities all around Florida are sending their policemen to training on how to be able to handle this. And we're going to have to, we're going to have to handle it because whether we have the dispensaries at Crestview or not, people would be driving through our city. So it's, it's going to impact on the police and our budget and all of the other kind of things. But anyway, so I would tell you that I think all of us have really done our homework on this and, and at this time, I'm not supporting it, but, but I think we have a monitoring system in there that will allow us to come back and address this at a later date. So any other comments or questions? Okay, call for a vote, please. And this is to approve ordinance 1629, a second meeting, send to mayor, council president, and city clerk.
Correct.
And that ordinance passes at the count five to zero. And Mr. Hayes, you may be excused if you need to at this time. Thank you. Okay, at this, at this point, we have public opportunity on council propositions. This would be, anybody in the audience would like to speak to us on something that was on the tonight's agenda, which we just covered pretty much everything. And there'll be another opportunity at the very end on any remarks you want to make. So does anybody this time that want to address this on anything that was on our agenda tonight? Okay, then we'll move along to the consent agenda if I can get action by the council on that.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
I move to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L.
Second.
Learning the alphabet, are you?
Second.
Okay, a motion second to approve the consent agenda A through L. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Uh, Ms. Faircloth did. Any discussion? Go to voting, please. I don't know where the law is.
Did he leave a proxy?
No. You can vote with that, I mean, if it's, if it's for...
Okay, I think we're going to have to take a voice vote since that seems to be locked up. All those in favor? Aye, those opposed? Okay, let the record show that we had four, four, none against, and one accused absence. Moving on to item 10. Moving on to item 10. We don't need to reconfirm?
Abstaining. They're not in the room, abstaining.
Okay. Item number 10, we have no resolutions tonight. Number 11, no committee reports. Number 12, no scheduled presentations from the public. And number 13, we're going to skip item 13A because Mr. Hayes is excused right now. We'll go to 13B. Mr. Cox, you want to discuss alcohol beverage review study? You have the floor.
Thank you. I believe we need to review and possibly update our alcohol ordinance as exists to accommodate commercial growth incoming, particularly nice sit-down restaurants, something that the citizenry really wants. We all want that. It's an important factor, it's a quality of life issue with much of our citizenry. So that's, I just wanted to state that, see where we're at with that and see if we can't take a look at that.
Mr. Cox, that suggests that we do a review of the alcohol ordinance. We have a consensus to have our staff do that. It would sound like a good idea. Okay.
And that's citywide?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. I know we're going to go back to Councilman Hayes. He's searching for EMO. That's what he says.
And I say, all right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. A, a, as you're aware, I represent Crestview as well as Northwest Florida and as a board member for the League of Cities State Board Director. Legislative Conference is, is going on. During this time, to save expenses, they've instituted EMO IV, which is a leadership and, of course, to further inform you more about city government, city operations, and how to make the best use of that. This is going on right after the League Conference, Legislative Conference. It starts on, Legislative Conference ends on Friday at about 11:00. This starts at Friday about 12:00, goes at 8:00 that night, then continues on to 3:00 the next, next day thereabouts. So what I'm requesting is a, this is a training event and the cost is $300 for this and hotel cost is $149 plus $8 in, in that effect.
That's per night, right?
Yeah, this is for this training event right here.
I know, but you're saying $149, I see hotel expense $390.
That was a general estimate. Ms. Royce said that, that it's been running about $195. We have not gotten confirmed figures for that. It's going to be the same price as the, the conference rooms are. They're just going to extend it out. So if they were $149, then this, that's what this one should go to.
I think it's around that figure.
But we did not have a confirmed figure and, like I say, our clerk has used $195.
Okay. But, but the, the cost is $300 for, for the class itself, for the hotel. Now, normally, travel expenses down there and back would be, be covered in that, which would almost double the $225, so I'm, I'm just asking for half of that for travel expenses, using my own vehicle and the wear and tear on it, you know, I, I take care of that myself. I'm not asking for any type of per diem for eating or things like that, I'll take care of that of my own, so I'm just asking for approval of this right here.
I get a motion from someone.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Clark.
I move to approve the request from Mr. Hayes for the IE MOIV class funding.
Mr. President, just a second. Okay, we have a motion second to approve the above request from Councilman Hayes. So we would say the total amount would be what, about $725, is that what? We're talking about $300 for the training and a couple hundred bucks for the hotel.
And is there, it's, it's $915.50.
What?
$915.50 utilizing the $195 for the rooms. So it would be less than the $915.50.
Yeah, about $725. The estimate, right? $300 and then you said about $195, we call it $200 and then $225. That's $725.
It'd be two nights, so it's what?
Well, that's why I asked about the $390, is that one night or two nights?
That's, that's two nights. There, it's $195 a night, which two nights is $390.
Okay.
So it would be, if it's the $145, you're looking, saving about $90 there.
Okay, so you said a total of $900. All right. Any, any discussion, questions? Please go to vote.
Mr. President, question, can I vote on this as a vote? The lower you say, yeah, okay.
Okay. You voted against it, Mr. Hayes. I'm sorry.
Long day.
Okay, staff reports, oh, wait a minute. We don't want to go ahead and finish up with the rest of the mayor. The mayor is very quiet this evening, so I'm not going to call on him. Ms. Faircloth, do you have anything else for us? Ms. Faircloth, do you have anything else for us? No, I won't. Okay, Mr. Hayes?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I got several things here that I want to bring to the council's attention. One of those is House Bill seventeen, that's down before, they're gonna, well, it's gonna be tomorrow, that they're gonna be considering that. And the House Bill seventeen is dealing with the CRA. House Bill seventeen is, they're basically saying that they want, it's outlined a process which CRAs can be phased out unless reauthorized by a supermajority vote of the body that creates CRA. Additionally, HB seventeen prohibits the creation of a new CRA unless authorized by a special act of legislator. The league strongly opposes this, and I do too. I plan on sending some emails out tomorrow before one o'clock. What I would like is support of the council, so I can say as, out of the city thing, opposing these restrictions that they're putting on the CRA.
You're looking for a resolution, is that what you're looking for?
Well, what I'm gonna, what I'm looking for is this consensus from them that they will support me opposing, sending, using the city's name as the City of Crestview council opposing this. That's what I wanted to say, some of the council doesn't approve on, that's why I'm bringing that before and that.
Anybody opposed to his, opposing that for us? Okay, you got a consensus.
Okay, also, from the CRC Local Government Committee, today, there's over a hundred proposals that have been filed, but the two in particular that the Florida League of Cities strongly supports is proposal number sixty-one by Chris Smith, proposes an amendment creating a transparent process for the legislator to preempt the home rule authority of municipalities. The proposal would require that each preemptive of home rule authority be filed as a stand-along bill. The bill must be heard in the House and Senate Committee within forty-eight hour notice, and the bill must be passed by legislator by two-thirds votes. This proposal would likely be considered by the CRC Local Government Committee within the next few weeks. And this right here is your constitution. People where things are going, they'll be looking at that, so dealing with, basically dealing with home rule, where we're trying to restrict the power that the government has over us, telling us what to do. So this right here hasn't come up, it's gonna be coming up, and I'll be, I can send a letter to this, but if the city supports that, I can send it in the city's name.
I think even more so than that, Mr. Cox, I mean, Mr. Hayes, I think that if we reach a consensus here, all of, most of us will be going to Tallahassee early next year, and we can all support that, if we're in agreement on that, and I think we are.
Yes. Okay, a couple other things, Mr. President. For as far as Veterans Day, veterans functions that I know numerous, several of us attended. Mr., our president was at one at Mount Zion on Sunday, and we appreciate the city, him stepping in, representing the mayor who could not be there. Also, I attended one at Carver Hill on the same day after that, and it was well received by the veterans. And I'd like to thank our city overall for the support and what they've shown towards our veterans. We know veterans are all around us, and we're still looking at trying to make not only Crestview, but Crestview included, Northwest Florida, the veterans capital of the world. And so that's gonna be coming up sometime before the League of Cities, and I'm sure that by the research they've done for, we got so many veterans here, my understanding is the largest concentration of anywhere in the world. If we can create this as being the veterans capital of the world, then we can, we're in good standings. Other than that, Mr. President, I guess you're gonna tell about the date change for the city, for Northwest Florida League of Cities Dinner and Fun Act. Date change.
I think everybody, you can give us the date, I think everybody's got the email on it.
Yeah, it's been changed to the nineteenth. So we're looking for everybody down there for that, and the board members, you and I. Also, if there's gonna be a tour, if you wanna go on the tour, we'll be tied up, so we can't make the tours to the wine place.
Oh, okay. Mr. Block, do you have any? Mr. Cox? I have a couple of things. One is, a few months back, maybe a year ago, we decided as council, the most important project we had to submit to Senator Gaynor and to submit Triumph, it was a Raspberry Road Connector, and we had took inputs, and we sat down, and Mr. Steele prioritized them, and I would just like to let you know the status. We've been meeting as an ad hoc Triumph, Ocalusa Triumph Committee on Fort Walton Beach for a few months now, the mayor and I have been representing the city, and we brought the Raspberry Road Connector over there to try to get Triumph money, and we got backing from the county to do a joint project, and I went to the county commissioners' meeting last week, and they weren't happy with all the projects they had, so I sat down with their engineer last Thursday, and we submitted this one with the county, the Raspberry Road Connector. And the way we submitted it was that the county will pay a half million dollars to fund the design, or at least get it going, and then Mr. Steele said we could use five hundred thousand dollars of future tax money. And then we, if you don't have something to put up, you're not gonna get Triumph money, they're not gonna fund a hundred percent of anything. And so we're going to them and asking them to get as much money as we can, and this is a pre-app, called pre-application, that the county commissioners voted on this morning, just I went over to Shalimar, they voted on this, and this is our project with the county on the Raspberry Road Connector. And so the county is supporting us in this endeavor to try to get it, try to get some more money, and as you know, Mr. Cox represented us to get money from Senator Gaynor, and we'll take money from anyone and give it to us. So that's where we are with the transportation. Second thing I have, as you remember, we had the city government week, I was trying to get the student government from Crestview High School involved, and they were going through transition, I didn't know that they're going through a transition of student government sponsors. And so I met with the new sponsor last week, and with the president of student government, and it's really neat, I mean, they have an active group of thirty-five to forty students, and they invited me to come back on the twenty-seventh, and they will tell me what they would like to do, how to get involved with city government and learn more about it. So when I come back from that meeting, I can let you know what they want to do, but I think it's kinda neat if we get young people involved in any kind of government, so I'm working on that project for y'all. And that's all I have, so we'll move on to staff reports. And I believe Chief Holland, you're gonna address the CAD program?
Yes.
Yes, if you would, please.
What this CAD program is, actually, the police department actually owns it already. What this is going to allow is basically, they already have the module, I'll be paying to get the key to unlock the fire side of it. So both police and fire will actually be on the same computer-aided dispatch program where we can try to assist each other out. As you well know, we're trying to focus on combining our dispatch centers back to help the citizens of Crestview, better our response times, and with all of us being cross-trained, my dispatch center being cross-trained with PD, with this, us being on the same CAD, they'll be able to enter calls, and the police officer, or the police department will be able to see them, they can enter calls for us, we can see them, and so on and so forth.
Any questions or comments for the chief? I have one, chief. Let me ask you this, if, you know, you know, I fully support the merger.
Yes.
And, but it has reached, there's a little glitch in there. So if this merger doesn't happen, or it doesn't happen rapidly, is this still gonna benefit you if you are in a different location?
Yes, and what this do, like I said, I mean, we did have a little bit of a glitch as far as building-wise, but it looks like we're coming along pretty good with that. This will actually allow us to go ahead and get the key, get it turned on, and then I can actually start working with my dispatcher and with Ms. Kathy.
Even if you're not co-located?
Even if we're not co-located, to be able to build the program up.
All right, good, thank you. That's all I have, anybody else? Can I have action, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
I move to approve the fire police department changes to the CAD program, or CAB program.
I have a motion. Motion second to approve the fire, the police department changes to the CAD program. Any discussion? Go to voting, please. And the vote carries five to zero. Murray, would you like to address your library closing for Thanksgiving?
It's actually for the Saturday after the Thanksgiving holiday, and it's our slowest day of the month, actually, not the year. I looked at the reports for the past five years, and it was the slowest day, and it would be considered an unpaid holiday.
Queen quiet here, but I think you said there's low attendance usually on the Saturday after Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
Any questions, Murray? Could I have action, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Block.
I move to close my mouth.
No, say that.
Could you be a little more specific?
On this specific date that's listed here.
Okay, Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Saturday after Thanksgiving.
You got a second on that?
Second.
Okay, the motion is to approve the closure of the library, the Saturday after Thanksgiving going forward. Any discussion? Please vote. Okay, and I vote, motion carries five to zero. Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to take any input from Madam Clerk, if you have anything for us?
No, sir. We've got two comments from the audience, and then your, Mr. Johnson would be first on that, 'cause he's been very patient.
Let me just say that the veterans parade went very well. I think everybody was satisfied with that.
I think it was one of the best weekends.
I think it was the biggest one I've been in anyway, so it was very nice.
It was very nice.
Mr. Holland, you have anything?
My father talked about it for three days before. He got up at three o'clock every morning for four days thinking it was the parade day, I'm like, I will never tell him early again.
Mr. Steele, you have anything for us?
No, sir, Mr. President, thank you. I will remind everyone I'll be away on vacation next week.
Okay, Mr. Police Department?
Yes, sir.
Murray, you have anything else?
No, thank you, thank you.
The chief, you have anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
And Tracy, you have anything else?
No.
Okay, then we're gonna move on to comments from the audience. We have two people. I have a Gary Johnson requested to speak. Mr. Johnson, if you just give us your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes to say whatever you need to say.
I thought I was supposed to get ten minutes.
Are you representing yourself or a group?
I'm representing an organization, a group.
Could you get a little closer to the mic, I can't hear you.
I'm representing a group.
There you go, okay. What group is that?
The New Way Alive Outreach Ministry.
Okay, all right, go ahead, sir.
My name's Gary Johnson, I'm a homeowner, I live at three ninety-eight North Springs Street, and I am a veteran. And I have two things that I want to speak on. I don't know, this is my first time here, so, but you will be seeing me more often. We're now planning our annual Thanksgiving feast. We're asking all businesses, citizens, and surrounding areas in and out of Opelousas County to please participate in giving to help feed the homeless, the hungry, and those that are less fortunate and in need of love and food and happiness. For this Thanksgiving, I know that there are a lot of us that don't know what it is like to be hungry and in need and without family at this time of the year. This is an open invitation to invite all military, EMS, sheriff department, and any type of law enforcement to come out and participate with us Thanksgiving Day at two P.M. I'm not gonna go into the donations we need, but we need donations to be successful with this. And for more information, you can please contact us at the New Way Alive Outreach Ministry at two-two-nine-three-seven-nine-seventeen-forty-one, or eight-five-zero-oh-four-three-one. Thank you in advance, may God bless you and your family during the holidays. We're also accepting monetary donations. We're asking that all donations be in by November the twentieth. And I want to speak on this especially. We, as a community and as a people, have got to come together and participate with each other. We have too many youth getting involved in gang violence, gang relationships, young girls getting hooked on drugs and prostitution, and we even done got to the point where these young folks done went to kidnapping. You know, we are Americans, one of the most powerful countries in the world. We can do everything with everybody. Why can't we get together as a people and try to help change some of this violence we have in Crestview? I can't speak for anybody else, but me and the members of my organization, we're willing to step out front and help the city leaders and their officials and law enforcement help change our city and our community, because we need a change. This stuff going on, we killing off our youth, and they killing off each other. And the law enforcement, they complain about nobody wanna help, nobody wanna get involved. Gary Johnson and the New Way Alive wanna get involved. We wanna help. So I'm asking all the city leaders, you know, y'all can't just, I mean, I might get out of order, but I notice when election time coming, oh, man, we see y'all everywhere. But what about the youth? Y'all talking about RVs, this and that. I ain't hearing nobody talk about the kids. Think of the pain if you would have lost your child to violence and to gangs. Do you know the hurt that that bring upon a mother to lose her son? And for the son of the, that's the victim that did this to the person? I know, and I don't care what nobody say, I'm not that educated, so I might not be using the right words, but I know what God put on my heart to say. We need to find a new way of doing things. If we stay back there doing things the old way, we gonna keep getting the old things. And that's why a change is not coming forth. I'm here. Tell me what you need from my organization to help bring about this change. I know a lot of stuff that go on in the community, but nobody don't wanna talk about it. But why? Because they say, well, the police ain't there when you need them. Because they say, "Well, the police ain't there when you need them." Okay? You can complain about the problem, but what are you doing to help fix it? We wanna help fix it. I wanna get kids on the weekend, and we get rakes and trash bags and have a dumpster somewhere, and start going around cleaning up areas in our community that's being overlooked. You ain't gotta pay me, I don't want nothing from it, but to see Crestview do better, and we come together as a people and help one another, no matter what differences we have. You might not like him, he might not like me, but don't you think it's time for us to put our dislike aside and do what's best for our kids and for our families? Let's start showing love in all we do, and, um, this Thanksgiving, I've already had, um, some guy called me from Eglin Air Force Base, he got twenty peoples that wanna dress up in their dress blues and come out and serve the food, and what I'm asking the city council and the mayor to do for us, I live right there on the corner, uh, I don't know, Bleeker or whatever that street, right there where Spring Street Cross, but I'm right in front of where the drive-through bank used to be, and from that corner, halfway down the block, I wanna block that off, it's not that much traffic coming, and just have a nice, loving Thanksgiving dinner where families can come together and communicate and show love to one another. You know, I mean, I, this is my first time here, but I can guarantee you, every time y'all have a city council meeting, you'll see my face, because I wanna keep up with what's going on in Crestview, because I'm a part of Crestview, you know, so, I need y'all help as well as y'all need mine's, and I'm here to do whatever y'all ask of me to do, and my organization too, and I thank y'all for letting me have this time, but I really need to get, I don't know, I, do I need to get a permit, or how I need to do it? I, I need that area, so, we can enjoy Thanksgiving. Listen to the word, Thanksgiving, that mean we supposed to be giving and loving ourself to the person that's not as fortunate as us, and that's all I have to say, and may God bless y'all and keep y'all.
Just a minute, if you would, Mr. Johnson, first of all, uh, thank you for serving, and thank you for appearing in front of us, uh, I'm glad you told us where you're gonna be, 'cause I didn't see that exactly.
Well, they put a, um, suppose they put one of these in y'all box.
What you need to do, sir, though, is to get with the mayor in order to close that street, he's the one, he's the one in charge of street closures?
Yeah.
And you'd have to make an appointment with him, or come by and see him.
I went today, but he, like you say, he ain't feeling good, but Mayor Kader, he, he know me very well.
You come back and see him, and he'll take care of you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Yes, great, Mr. President. And I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson for coming forward. What I would like for him to do is meet with me and the chief, and so we can let you know what Crestview's doing towards some incidents that you mentioned. But, but, uh, I'll get with you, and we'll set an appointment, and we'll talk, and we'll, we'll talk.
Okay.
So, we'll know what some of the things is going on that you might not be aware of.
Close. You know what I like? Me and you both, with it.
Amen.
Oh, goodness.
All right, let me get back on track here, uh, thanks for... Okay, any other comments from the audience?
We have one more.
Oh, yes, I do. I have, uh, Jody Smallwood.
Yes. Uh, Jody Smallwood, um, thirty-three, forty-nine Auburn Road, Crestview, Florida. Been a city employee here for almost twenty-four years. Uh, when I started in nineteen ninety-three, uh, the city would give, uh, employees turkeys, uh, gift cards, and let you sell back your leave that you had earned or accrued by working through the year. The, we went away from the turkeys and started giving out gift cards for, uh, Thanksgiving instead of turkeys, then we kept the sellback, then we went away with the gift cards altogether, and we kept the sellback. Now, and I believe it was two thousand eight or two thousand and seven, we stopped the sellback of leave. What I'm asking for on behalf of all the employees, 'cause I only represent the firefighters, is, uh, to allow sellback, uh, of the leave. We used to do it where you had a combination of annual leave and sick leave. What I would request is annual leave, but what I was talking with Ms. Roy about is, I was under the understanding it was budgeted, your sickle, your annual leave was already budgeted for, therefore, there was no other additional cost. She was informing me that it would cost an additional forty hours per employee to, to add this for Christmas money for the employees. I think that the department heads could probably find that money, because it's a well reward to their employees for a job well done for the year. Uh, it's their own leave, selling it back to you to help them pay for their kids' Christmas presents, or their wife's Christmas presents, or whoever they wanna buy gifts for, and it was a very nice thing that we used to have, and it went away when the market hit a big turn in two thousand and eight. So, we haven't had it for nine years. So, I was requesting if you all could get that done, I'm sure that the department heads here would like to provide that for their employees. And I'd also like to, uh, the firefighters will donate a hundred dollars to your, uh, Thanksgiving, I'll get you a check tomorrow if you can give me the information, and... That's all I have.
Well, I, I would just say that, uh, obviously, we don't have the information right now, uh, we'd have to get-
And Christmas is another council meeting away.
What I'm saying is, we, we need to get the information from the city clerk, 'cause we're not educated enough on, on that, what you're saying, you know, so, uh, we can request city clerk to give us the good, the bad, and the ugly of the, of doing that, if you would provide some of that.
And a simple explanation is, if you have forty hours of, of leave that you wanna sell back, what we budget right now is for everybody to either work, be sick, or be on leave for a normal employee or a forty-hour employee, two thousand eighty hours a year. You either, you're on your paid sick leave, you're paid to work, or you're on annual leave. Selling back that leave adds forty hours to that. So, we, we would be budgeted two thousand twenty hours as opposed to two thousand eighty in order for that to be in the budget, which it is not this year, I'll get you the numbers of the December eleventh meeting.
But I mean, even, not everybody's gonna use this, I'm not gonna use it, I use my leave, I'm not gonna sell back leave, but there's a awful lot of employees in the city and other departments are less fortunate than I. Uh, I've been here, like I said, almost twenty-four years, so I have developed contingency plans, but a new employee wouldn't have-
Well, I understand what you're saying, we just, we just need to look at the numbers.
But I'm, I'm saying, I think your department heads, even if there was some number crunching that, I'm sure they could find some little ways in some of their budgets to find that, if there's an extra dollar I may have put over in overtime that I know I'm not gonna be using, there's money there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank y'all for coming.